Down the road a ways, I stopped at a store that I used to always stop to. Here come a police escort.
Was it a double trailer?
I almost think it was. The state trooper that was escorting had stopped right by me like an average. What the hell is that? It's a blade mower. That's all I've done for two months is escort these things.
Oh yeah, so you go through the street curb.
Yeah. I can't remember which way they were playing. Good weight. You can walk right inside where it hooks on to the mechanism. You can walk right inside it. You can almost drive the car.
The base?
It's big. They have a day every year, like in May or June, I think it is, that you can walk. And they have a blade up there that's actually damaged. It's set there and look at it.
They got one right now. The third and fourth one in right now. There's only two blades on it.
Oh really?
Something might be wrong with it.
Excuse me, it's 5:30. Call a meeting to order. It's recording. Alright, we'll call a meeting to order at 5:30. Introduction of all those present. I'm Steve Barrett, Jerry Wademan, Rick Coslin, we're your select board. And the next item up is the approval of the minutes of 10:03. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of 10:03.
No, second it?
Any errors, admissions?
I didn't see anything.
Corrections? Nothing? All those in favor of approving the minutes as printed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Ayes have. Next item we got is Lindsey Wright. She's here to reference the sleeper pond dam. Do you want to like to join us at the table? I'd like to have you up here. Kind of briefly read over the summary report here.
Great, yeah, well, I am happy to. I'm mainly here to answer any questions we have. I can give an overview for everyone assembled. I run the Mississauga River Basin Association, so we oversee the whole watershed, starting here. You guys are in the Mississauga watershed, Mud Creek flows into the Mississauga and Canada. And so, we applied for grant funding, I guess it was, yeah, it was early 2018, I believe, when we received a grant from the state, from the DEC, to do an alternatives analysis on the dam. Some local folks had expressed concern about it, and I said, "Well, let's see if we can get funding to hire someone to do that." So we hired Malone and McBroom, who have done a lot of dam assessments in the past, and they came out and they measured the dam, and measured the sediment behind the dam, and the cross-sections of the dam, and all of that. I have their final report, which is, I think, 76 pages long, something it's referred to in the shorter summary that you guys have as Appendix D. And I'm gonna leave this with Denise if you do want to see it. I think, I also have an electronic copy, which I may have sent around. You're welcome to that as well. This contains all of their findings. And my goal was to say, "Is there any recommendations about this dam?" We had them assess it based on four potential action items. One was no action, leave the dam as it is. One was removal of the dam, entirely take it out and turn Mud Creek back into a free-flowing creek there. One was repair the dam, and one was to replace the dam. So they assessed that through, again, they measured sediment, they measured the cross-section, they looked at the hydrology, they looked at the amount of flow coming in, they looked at the amount of sediment coming in, and then they said, "Okay, here's ballpark costs." They gave us a cost assessment. That was what I was most interested in. And that is at the back of the summary report, and it's also at the back of this longer report. It says, I simplified it as a graph here, and this will be on file if you guys want to see it. And I can leave my email address, too, if anyone wants an electronic copy of this whole draft. So then, the no action is obviously gonna be the cheapest, it's doing nothing, but within their larger report, Malone and McBroom said that that will come at a cost. There's always rumors about the state saying, "Okay, you're gonna have to pay for the risk of a dam failure," and that would go to the owner of the dam, which is the town. That hasn't happened yet, and that's been sort of a rumor for a long time, but it could crop up that you would end up with annual fees, based on having a dam that could fail. There also, if that failure were to happen, I think Malone and McBroom estimated 15 tons of phosphorus being held back by the dam and that sediment when they did the sediment testing, and so that would wash down into Mud Creek, into the Mississauga, eventually to Lake Champlain. And that's sort of the state's big catchword right now, is everything they're doing is based on keeping phosphorus out of Lake Champlain. So that could potentially come with costs as well.
How many tons?
15 tons, yeah, which is a pretty significant amount. It's not that surprising. Most of our phosphorus is in the sediment, and it's a full lot of sediment.
What would happen to the 15 tons in any alternative?
They would remove it. So that's where the cost is committed for the other three, the repair, replace, or removal alternatives. There are costs that they, and these are again ballpark costs, but that would include the full project, getting the permits, doing the whole work. And the bulk of that cost would come from having to remove that sediment and truck it away. There were some minor contaminants found in the sediment. Luckily, nothing real bad that we need to be alarmed about, but it means that they can just scoop it up and dump it on a farm field or anything, and there's a chance that we would have to haul it even all the way to Casella, or potentially to a development site, depending on what the state says about those contaminants. So that's where the bulk of the cost would come from, for any of those alternatives analyses. And then the other cost would come from either repairing the dam, they would have to shore that existing one up and then fill it in. The replacement, they would actually end up removing that dam and building a new one, because it is, they would build the new one in and then slowly remove it so that the water stays in there, and then full removal would be removing the dam. And that is, of the action alternatives, that was the cheapest one, coming in at $538,000, which is not at all unreasonable for the scope of work in the state. These dam removal remediation projects generally are up there in several hundred thousand, and there are grant funds available for that. It does take generally multi-year process to raise the funds from different sources and find different grants that will match. But I'm here basically to allow you guys to ask any questions. I am not the engineer that did this work, so if there are technical questions, they did express willingness to come and meet with you guys if you would like, and if we do go down the road, I would, of doing something, of taking one of those three actions, remove, repair, or replace, then I would certainly bring them in.
I was, I've been on the select board for a number of years now, and the dam had come up a number of years back, and we were told that all dams are federally controlled.
If they are hydropower, if they are producing, yes, then Burke oversees them.
We, well, my interpretation was that all dams, no matter what, were under a federal jurisdiction. So if we were to do anything with this dam, that would require federal permits.
I would have to investigate that more. That was not my impression talking from Malone and McBroom, and they've done a lot more of these things than I have, obviously. This is my first foray into this experience. But I would, thank you for raising that. That's a question that I can shoot to them.
Please, because I mean, that's a tremendous cost dealing with federal government.
Federal permits, yes. Yeah, and there is, I mean, again, so, speaking from the federal, the other hat I wear is overseeing the wild and scenic designation, and I don't believe this would have a direct impact, because Mud Creek is not part of that designation, and where Mud Creek flows into the Mississauga is also in Canada, so it's not part of that either. But that could bring in some Section 7 federal concerns, but I will certainly, I can clear that up with the.
So even if the dam was to be replaced, and you wanted to bring the aesthetics back of, you're still dredging?
Yep, yeah, so that's why the sediment removal is a part of any of the action items. Yeah, so the no action item is just leaving it as it is, with the sediment backfill, with it being more of a swamp than a pond. Any of the others would either turn it back into a pond, mainly for recreational purposes, or would remove it and turn it back into a free-flowing.
So the Agency of Natural Resources would get heavily involved in that?
Yes, they would have to, that's where the permitting cost would come from, is getting their permits and getting that approved by our stream engineers.
So we're talking millions?
No, this would, this cost includes the permitting. Yeah, Malone and McBroom estimated the permitting cost as well as the actual construction cost. So again, these are not final numbers, we're not holding them to that, but this is the best ballpark they could, based on the other projects they've been involved with around the state.
There's no expectation of putting this into a hydro dam, so that we can?
If that is something that, that would be, if you guys wanted to pursue that, and the funding available for that sort of work is much less than the funding available for remediation work for environmental purposes, that would be something we would have to pursue, based on your interest. Yeah, so that's not included in any of these. The replacing of the dam would merely be for turning back into a pond and retaining the water.
So basically, just for recreational purposes?
Yep, and aesthetics. And environmental concern. I mean, the sedimentation buildup, Malone and McBroom estimated that there's 400 more, I think it's 400 more pounds of sediment, of phosphorus laden sediment, coming in annually. So that number's just gonna go up from the 15 tons that it currently is at.
So are there grants available for this?
There are, yeah. The Mount Natural Resources Council has dam removal grants.
100%?
No, that's why it would take some time to match. Yeah, it's generally not gonna be, "Here, you can have all the money, go ahead and do it." The folks that I know that have done this, where the Connecticut River Conservancy has done it several times, the White River Partnership removed one in Randolph this year, and the Northern Forest Canoe Trail got a broken dam removed, and that took six years of their time. The Connecticut River Conservancy was able to do their most recent one in just about two or three years, find all the funding, but it would come from a variety of sources.
So it takes that long to remove the dam and the sediment?
Yeah, well, it's mostly to raise the funds. That's, yeah, not the actual work, but, yeah, to identify the funding. So usually, something like the dam removal group would be, "Here's a couple hundred thousand," and then we'd raise a couple hundred thousand from, you know, maybe the DEC grants, or maybe even federal grants. And then, you know, sometimes it comes down to doing an appeal with the land trust or River Conservancy and saying, "Hey, we're gonna remediate this. Can we add some little dollars here and there?"
Is it usually 100% funded when all of that is put into place, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, that's the goal, is to get it funded through outside sources. I mean, I know that the town is, this is not something the town can carry, and this is something that my organization is interested in doing, because it will improve the overall quality of Mud Creek. So that would be our push. We would say, "No, we need to raise these funds from all these different sources, so that we can make this part of the state better for water quality."
And you would be the one to help us with that?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yeah, that would be something I would take on, would be finding that grant funding.
So if you get into this for a couple of years, and you can't find the funding to do this, does it all just go away?
Yeah, if we can't raise the funds, yeah. Yeah, we would just fall back on the, "Okay, I guess we're doing the no action if we can't get enough funding for it."
And your cost of this is?
My cost would be wrapped into the grants. So I would write that in and say, "Okay, I'm going to ask for $200,000 from the state of Vermont," and, you know, 10% of that would go to covering my time.
Lindsey, what's the chances of not getting any?
I would say that we have a good chance of getting funding. You know, it's because especially of the phosphorus loading, and that's a really nice number to throw around right now, and because of the time period that we're in, the state of Vermont is throwing money at water quality, and that's great for projects like this. We're in a, I'm in a good time to be doing water quality work, because there's a lot of money allocated for this type of work, and it's just sort of saying, "All right, if we're gonna remove 15 tons of potential phosphorus from Lake Champlain, the state's gonna go, 'All right, that's a pretty good number, let's figure out how that..."
So have we identified where that 15 tons of phosphorus has come from?
It's come from upstream, so it's from the riverbanks washing in and moving in.
And how will that be stopped with anything that's done with the dam, with the pond, with anything?
So the 15 tons that I would use to raise the money and bandy about is what is built up and being held by the dam. So if the dam were to fail, that flush of phosphorus would probably make it all the way to Lake Champlain, that's the story I tell, because it's not going to get slowed down. It's gonna be a massive breach that's gonna go wailing right along.
How much water is that dam holding back?
Oh, I think it's in the report, I don't have it on the top of my head.
I did read, but it's only 400 feet away from the dam.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah. I think it might be in your summary report, and probably only printed off the last two pages, but...
So currently, with the dam being undermined, it is just flowing naturally?
It's flowing, but in small amounts. So, I mean, I'm not saying that the sediment that's coming in from upstream is not concerning. I would love to work with folks, and I have reached out to landowners about, you know, stabilizing those banks and putting in riparian buffers and keeping the phosphorus out of the river. That's gonna be a long, slow process, but when we have sort of normal amounts of sediment flowing downstream, some of that will settle out, and it won't make, it still hurts our water quality, but it doesn't make it to Lake Champlain. So it's not that buzzword for the state where they're going, "Oh gosh, this is really bad for the lake." You know, we don't have the blue-green algae in our streams, so it doesn't garner the attention that it does.
We don't have Burlington dumping X amount of gallons of sewage in our waters either.
Right? Lucky brass. Yeah, we're lucky with those sorts of issues, so we have to...
So we could potentially get this fixed at no cost to the town?
That would be my goal, yeah. I am not here to say, "You guys need to raise your taxes." That is not something that I'm interested in having you guys do. I'm interested in exploring what funding is available, and keeping in contact with you guys, and saying, "Hey, here's a grant that I would like to apply for, and if you guys would approve for it, approve me doing that, I would be happy to go after that funding." But what I want from you guys is twofold. One, a sense of if that's something, I would like to remove the dam, that's my end goal, because I think it's the most achievable of the action items, and it's the best for water quality and for aquatic life. So if that's something you guys are interested in, I am happy to start exploring funding options. I also am curious if, I don't know how your guys, bylaws work if you need to reach out to the town. If that's the case, I'd be happy to come, or I'd be happy to get Malone and McBroom to come to town meeting, if that's something that you need to put to a townwide vote.
Town meeting is not too far away.
I know.
Lindsey, on to no action. Does that involve clearing out the sediment?
Nope. No action is leaving it as it is.
Yeah, but when the dam breaks, even with the no action, you're gonna have that 15 ton of sediment gone.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately.
And who's responsible for that?
I am actually not 100% sure, Chris, about that one, but I suspect that if...
I'm gonna play devil's advocate, because it's the town pond.
Right.
Is the town gonna be held liable?
I suspect. I don't know if anything would ever come of that, but if there were to be any fines, it would be a town issue, because it, you know, it's not like you've had someone say, "Oh, this is in danger, and you need to fix it or else," but they know that it's in disrepair because of the severe infections that they do, so.
Does it have to go to a townwide vote if there's no cost associated with it?
There's gonna be costs.
No.
Nothing free.
You're right, nothing's free.
And ways that other organizations have worked out, sort of doing a match thing like you're talking about, is having the town equipment available for the work, and some of the hauling and things like that. So that would probably come up in the discussions when I'm saying, "Oh, I'm gonna apply for grant funding, is there any way we can allocate a certain amount of equipment hours or anything like that?" So, yeah, in that respect, there would probably be some cost associated with. My goal is to not have, you guys have to put any dollars down, but applying for grant funding goes a lot easier, if I could say, and the town has this piece of equipment that they would...
Yeah, we have three employees, and they're busy.
Yeah.
I'm sure we could find some volunteers.
Great, and that helps too, is match. If we say, "Okay, we'll have volunteers that'll come back in and, you know, plant out what's left after," you know, because there will be sediment exposed.
This sediment that we're talking about, we have to remove it, and you said you're not gonna be able to just dump it on farmland or have you. Where are we gonna go with it?
So there's two options, and it would come down to what the state permit says, because it would have to be treated as development soil, so it could be used as fill for a construction project. And the other option is, it would have to be disposed of by Casella. So that's where, like, trucking costs would be a lot more if we can't find a local...
What do you mean by a development site?
It means that it can't be used for agriculture or anything like that, but it could be used as fill on a building project. So if somebody wanted to come in and fill in the pit, then...
As long as it was permitted.
Yeah.
Properly permitted, they could take this stuff.
As long as it won't leak or something.
Right, but you can't dump it on a farm.
Right. Which would, in our section of the world, is the easiest thing to do with sediment. If we could do that, that'd be great. I was disappointed that there was something given.
Salt Newport.
Yeah, tell them to fill it.
Fill all. I mean, it would look nice repaired.
We got a hole somewhere that we can fill?
It would look nice repaired.
We got a hole somewhere we can fill?
There's a lot of options. People that live right down here on the main road, that if it was gone, they would, probably wouldn't have the water problems they have.
I understand. Well, it says in here that, that I read, that it's kind of a, that because of the dam had failed, that the drains into pond are causing backups and flooding issues. It says flooding issues due to culverts being blocked. Well, you raise the level of that.
And it's gonna be worse.
It's gonna be worse than what we have now.
But you got the sediment all settling in there.
Right.
That's what's blocking up your...
And that's not gonna stop with cornfields upstream.
No, you gotta keep dredging that near the drain, near the storm drain.
But if the dam was gone, it's gonna flush through.
Right.
It's gonna keep going.
Right.
At a lower percentage, and you won't see as much phosphorus in one area like it is now.
Right.
But then you still got a swamp.
And the beavers would probably move right back in and...
But if you clean up some of it out, it's gonna help. It's definitely gonna help.
You're still gonna have to keep that storm drain clear.
The best option is to see it gone, but I, you know, if we say yes tonight, is the rest of the town gonna scream? The fire department's gonna scream, you're taking away their water source.
They don't use it, because they can't get any water out of it.
But they would love to use it if it was fixed.
Well, they're not going to, because they're asking other people if they have a water source that they can use. They can't use it, because the water level's so low.
I don't have a problem with seeing it gone. I think it would be better for, definitely, the houses down there.
It's almost like if the project should be put together with some, to present at town meetings.
I think so, yeah.
With some sort of a plan, that this is what, you know, we'd like to do, and we get a little approval.
At least get the, get citizens to read into this or whatever. Let them, yes, let them know what's going on. I agree.
Could you get us more input for then?
Yeah, yeah, I would be happy to, like I said, I can get, if you guys want, Malone and McBroom to come and present on it. You know, I will check with them right away. They did say if the town...
I think if you had the info, and, you know, we allowed her to speak at the town meeting.
Would you be willing to come to town?
Yeah, I would be happy to come to town.
And that way, the people would know.
Do you think, do you think we could take one of these, or at least have a clean copy in the office there, and in, like, the water bills or something? Put a note in there that if you want...
But not everyone in town that pays for it is gonna see it, just the people, water users.
But word of mouth will get around after that. You got 140-something water users, word after that will get around. That's what I'm getting at, and, you know, maybe people will come in and say, "Can I have a copy of this?"
I'd like you to find out about the federal issue.
Yeah, we could.
Something like that, yeah.
Or even have copies on your counter.
Yes, yes.
And I mean, if Washington's gonna get involved, then I don't need anything, nothing.
Yeah.
Bad enough for the state.
Right, and then Agency of Natural Resources, I, we've worked with them before.
Lindsey, can you check also with the fire department to see what type of made possible grants they can get for creating a water supply?
Sure.
I think people are gonna go for seeing it gone, because it's been such a nice order, and I think it would be much better.
Still gonna be the cattails and...
Well, I think you're gonna clean a lot of it out, getting that phosphorus out, and it's gonna make it look better, and you could spruce it up a little bit.
For a few years, I think it'll make it look better.
You know, they're gonna, they're gonna clean the channel, and by cleaning the channel, you're gonna spruce it up, I think.
It might help dry it up, too.
Yeah.
So how do you wanna leave it in the, split one minute?
Well, it balls back in her court. She'll present more information to us.
Lindsey's gonna get information and...
If it's even a possibility to do something.
Well, if you take that, if you take the dam down, the fire department won't be able to draw from there.
You said they don't use it now, right?
They did use it on that Church Street fire.
So do they use it, or don't they use it?
They did utilize it on the Church Street fire, that's the last time they used it.
But they haven't used it in years.
That's the only time they used it.
Pretty much, they don't use it then?
No.
Because they gotta go two miles before they can get anything?
They gotta dry, they gotta crack in the pipe, so it don't suck.
Oh, well, then they gotta fix the pipe.
Yeah, that's been broken, I don't know how many years.
Well, that's like the reason why they...
Yeah, and I'm still concerned with the phosphorus that's in there, the phosphorus that's coming down, and none of this is addressing that.
Right. Yeah, that's gonna be an ongoing concern, and for that, unfortunately, my struggle is we need landowner buy-in.
There's gonna be people that are gonna say, "Well, what are you gonna do to protect that from washing down through there?"
That's been said before, when we cleaned the pond years ago. They cleaned it out once, years ago, and that was the big concern, is it's still coming, how you gonna stop it?
Right. Yeah, and the more rate events that we have, like we had last week, the more we get.
And as soon as you throw something at the ag department, they just throw their hands up and say, "Oh, you can't do nothing with it."
True. That's been my experience as well.
So you wanted to say that Lindsey will get more information to the select board? Yeah, and we put together our warning the end of January, so...
And then be in contact with Denise for town meeting, if you could come and explain it to the people, that'd be great.
Yeah, do you want me to check back in with you guys at next month's meeting and give you any info more? And then we can make a determination about whether I should get in the town warning?
Yes.
Okay?
That'd be good.
What's the date?
The first Thursday in December.
So that would be that.
Well, we're in October still.
Come backwards, I think it's the 5th.
December is Monday, Tuesday's, Thursday's, it's the 5th, I think, of December.
I think so too.
December 5th.
Well, great, I will...
I'll put you on right at 5:30.
That would be great, yeah, yeah, yeah. My MRBA meeting's, it's 7:00 PM on the first Thursday. Yeah, I will also reach out to some of the funders and say, "Hey, what's coming in the pipeline, and what are potential possibilities?" So hopefully I'll have some more concrete info for you guys about what might be something we could go after if the town does decide to, if you guys and the town decide to pursue it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Any other kind of questions?
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next month.
Okay, Denise has my email if any of you guys do have questions, or if someone's gonna chat to me. I should've brought cards, sorry. Same with anyone here, if you have any questions, most of you have my email, but Denise has it certainly. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
That's gonna increase taxes for the people around...
That's another concern, yeah, they would end up with more, potentially more property.
They're gonna end up with more land.
It's gonna increase their insurance, which is the protection of what the victim, what the insurance says.
So, anyway, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, that's, that's another reason. It's always a long process because, yeah. And, and one thing, um, that Malone and McBroom has done with other towns, um, I'm blanking on. There was a town that they were working with, the Connecticut River Conservancy. It may have been Burke, in fact, and they were doing a, a dam removal, a very controversial dam removal. And Malone and McBroom just gave this mind-blowing presentation where they addressed all the issues. So if there are concerns, I would certainly, maybe not at a town meeting, but if the town decides to go for it and we get down this process, I would certainly be happy to bring Malone and McBroom up and do some sort of town-wide presentation outside of a meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Have a good evening.
Drive you careful.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on. Carenses by local citizens or visitors. I know Barry would.
Hi, Barry.
You got nothing? Bob? Barry?
Yeah, um, I didn't wanna do this, but there's no other way. I've been working on this for six months and I'm not getting the answers. Now I'm getting a resistance. Don't listen to him and a bunch of other things. We have the right to know what's going on. So far, you and Denise have controlled that whole thing with no accountability, no minutes, no nothing. I can't live with that. Two people in a, in a democracy, in a town, everyone should be involved in this amount of money, but no. Steve Barret and Denise, total control. We don't know nothing that's happened. And there's nothing I can do about that except I can bring an awareness to the people. That's my objective now. But there's no other way since we can't talk, we can't have discussion. I have to file complaints. Sorry, I don't wanna come to complaints either. But if that's the only way it's gonna make you move and allow us to speak what we have to do, that's what I'll do. This is six months going on. There's a lot of questions I have about the water system. I don't get them. And now it's turning into a bit of a mockery. Uh, I ask a question and you don't have a crystal ball. Please. That, you know, that's unacceptable. Unacceptable. I can't take that for an answer. That's a violation of, of our open meeting rights. And I've been at, I've been at this for four years. You have never, you've never even came close to curing any of the, uh, non-compliance items that I have brought up. I suppose you say you're not doing anything wrong. I'm saying you're doing something wrong. And by law, if I feel that I might, my, my rights have been violated, I have the right to file a complaint. I'd rather have discussions than do this, but not possible. So we start. Here's my, uh, I'm gonna lean on you on this one because you've given me no breaks. And, uh, I've gotten a lot of, a lot of resistance and other things I don't care for because I'm just simply exercising my constitutional rights, speaking, asking questions. Now the thing that's going around is I'm beating a dead horse and I agree with Jerry. He already asked a hundred questions. You know, I mean, you're, you're telling me not to ask questions? This is, this is a democracy. We have to relook at this. Anyway, so here's what I'm gonna do. I was on the agenda of the September fifth select board meeting to speak about the water system project and how business was being handled by the select board. Sensitive questions they don't wanna answer. The issue concerned nine meetings in late two thousand eighteen where seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was signed off to contractors at the nine meetings. The meetings were never worn to the people, no were any minutes taken at the meetings, as well as other alleged non-compliance of laws and constitutional rights. This is not right. We have the right to know. I feel it's hurting our future generations that things like this. No documentation. Nobody knows what happened. No one knows how the money was spent. No accountability. Two people handle it. That's it. And if you complain, you shut up. So at one point on the September fifth sub-select board meeting, I asked a question about this, about the money. Steve Barret answered the question with a non-related question and he insisted I answer his question. Answer a question with a question. Very good. Very slick. Anyway, uh, then Jerry Waterman and Rick Goldsman said, I was beating a dead horse and they would, and just move on. Move on. Get rid of them. So they did that. And I wasn't allowed to speak on that issue. I did speak a little more later when Denise encouraged me to go on to the next thing I had in my agenda. But still, the unanswered questions, unanswered documents and, uh, future generation, I'm real concerned about them. The way that, the way this, um, post-select board is run, the future generation hasn't got a chance. So I believe they were trying to silence me because the issues were serious and involved questionable handling of the recent water project funds in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I already mentioned a couple of things. So my constitutional right and open meeting law to speak openly at these meetings has been violated over and over and over and over. I allege a non-compliance of open meeting law, B S T three one one. Okay, this incident was one of three times in the past year where I was not allowed to speak and get accountability on town business. It is our right. It is in the constitution. It's in the open meeting laws. We have the right to know. Also, all public servant, servants have to be accountable. That is the law. That is the constitution. Not happening here. We, we have been doing the same thing for a long time and will continue to do. They don't want, you don't wanna, uh, comply to the laws. You've made that very clear documents and everything. So this is a complaint, this here. So the cure, I wanna, I want the select board to schedule a special meeting to answer my and other water users' questions and be allowed to speak until we have addressed all issues completely. I think my cure is very reasonable and long overdue to get some information. We've got nothing all the way through. If you do not cure this complaint, I will file the other two. It'll be three complaints consecutively. So think about, maybe it might be a good idea. And then more complaints after that. Because I can't talk to you. I've got a lot of things on my mind. I spent four years learning the laws to make this a better town. I built a website at my own cost. I never even got a thanks for that. But I'll tell you what I'm gonna do with that website. I think that, uh, that damn thing's real nice. I'll publish it on the website and, and Facebook. It'll get some, it'll get some views. This, you know, this hun- this thing like we're in the eighteen hundreds, you know, word of mouth, unbelievable. So that's it, that's it. And there's one more thing. This, I'm over with the, uh, that, that complaint will be in your box tomorrow. But it's not, three consecutive other ones on the same thing. I can't, I can't deal with how, uh, these, these laws are being broken. They're taken so lightly and now ridicule on them. I can't do it. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna put myself out by normal line. People not gonna like me. There's gonna be a scapegoating campaign. Uh, he's costing us money. He's a troublemaker. No, no, no. I'm fighting for democracy and, and transparency. We don't get it yet. So anyway, I was talking about, I wanna, I wanna know what's going on with, with this water project, which no one's telling us. You get this two years and I wanna know about the expenses. I wanna know the expenses are, that, that are, um, what is costing for the water committee? And I know Denise, thank you for showing me that thing on the annual, annual book. But I have to go a step further. I wanna know, I don't know how you do your accounting. We gotta work together according to the Public Records Act. If I ask for you for something that you don't really understand, we, you have to talk, we have to discuss and find out what it is so I can get it. That's the law. An answer like, I don't know what you're looking for and, you know, and you're not gonna get it from me. It won't work. And so I'm asking you to cooperate because everyone wants to know. We got a two-year delay and still I wanna know how much money, how much profit of whatever it is that you make from the, uh, the hundred water, water users that pay three hundred dollars for water and so, two ninety-five for water and so, I wanna know if the, if that is used to simply cover expenses or is there a profit left over and how much is it? And the only way I'm gonna do that is to go through the expenses. So I would like to know, we can take this slow Denise. I need to know, what, you know, you told me what the expenses are. What are the breakdown? So-and-so gets this to do that. Uh, we have to pay this for that. The, of the breakdown of the expenses. Just give me the names of the thing and then I'll maybe ask for documents and everything to look at because I wanna learn. Not only that, I want this for the future generations who don't know nothing. And, uh, I wanna make it clear to the people here that this, we have a deficit right now because of, uh, all the water hauling and everything and, and, uh, there is gonna be, um... Let me finish a second, then you got it. I read in the, in the USDA documents, there's gonna be a forty-year loan for all of this stuff. And so the people that'll listen to me, your children's children, are gonna be paying a high water bill. Now is the time we can take a look at it while it's in process. If we wait until after, everything's done and nothing's done. So right now, that's why I need all this information from you, Denise. I'm, I'm just gonna ask you. The first stage is to get me just the breakdown. What are the, what, what, who pays, you know, services? Contractors, goods, anything that relates to the, exclusively to the water project. Then we can take it from there and I'll publish this so the people know what they're dealing with. And when it comes around two years, everyone's gonna know what the expenses were that, that made our water bill happen there. It's not gonna be, oh, no, we don't talk about it and don't ask questions. And then two years later, it pops up surprise, like the, uh, like the press water increase. That's what I learned. I learned from, uh, the state people I've talked to. They said, people come to them all the time after it's all said and done. If you wanna do something, do it in the process. Get the information in the process. And then you can do things with that information. So that's what I'm gonna do. And I know you don't like going to meetings, but I suggest if you cure the first meeting, which is very reasonable, the other two, I will not, I will not file the other two. If you don't, beating a dead horse. That's what I'll have to do. So that's all. I'm not, I'm out for, uh, I'm out for this time in myself. I need to know. And I don't have to explain to you why I need to know by law. I just need to know.
Thank you.
So you need to tell me specific dates that you want this, these documents for?
Just, just start out with, give me a list of, of what the expenses are. This goes to that contractor, you know, like that.
Well, for, I need a timeframe there.
What do you want, ten days? I don't care.
No, no, no. I need to, I'm not understanding what you're asking for. Like, I can't tell you, well, every month.
Not every month. Whatever, whatever, whatever your billing cycle is. It's three months, right? Billing cycle's three months.
Yes. But we pay bills each and every month.
Okay, then you just, first of all, give me a list of the expenses. The, you know, electric is one of the expenses. You know, I don't know them.
Expenses differ from month to month. Some...
It's gonna change right off.
It's gonna change.
What you call that, we gotta plug in...
That's all right. Sorry, you give me a general idea of what I'm working with and then I can...
Yeah, but I can give you a detail of each account in the water department, each expense account. But what are the dates you're looking for? I mean, I can't, there, there's different bills each and every month. If Fred repairs a water leak, there's gonna be a different...
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but...
Right, so I can't say, okay, these are the monthly bills because the bills change from month to month is what I'm saying there. I'm not trying to be difficult. I just can't give you...
It's all right, you're working with me. That's what, that's all I'm asking for. No, um...
So if you ask for a printout of, uh, the last six months, I can do that for you. Or the last three months or whatever.
And these are, these are all the expenses that are involved in paying, you know, the water system, all of them.
Well, yeah.
All right, give me that and then I'll ask for...
For how many months?
When did this start? When did this start? When was it completed?
When did what start?
Okay. The project was finished in last January, right? Or November, or December, right?
The water project?
Yeah.
And then when they signed off, it was like April, May, something before they've signed off on everything. Released it over, I thought.
April two thousand nineteen, right?
I don't remember.
April on, that's good. April, aren't you...
Remember, they were working on my back lawn out there and they hadn't signed off yet because they, they weren't done everything.
Because, you know, Denise, I know what you, you're into this. I know, I know, it's, you know, it's a little bit complicated, but I also didn't wanna...
I, I understand accounting theory. I just need to know dates.
Oh, okay. Then do it from April from here and then, and then after that, I wanna, I wanna get the expenses in each billing period, every three months, again. Cause you, like you said...
Well, you'll have to request those. I mean, you'll...
Yeah, I will, yeah, of course. I'm not gonna ask you to, uh, I'll do it strictly by the law and then, you know, we see. And then we see. I wanna see, I'll learn something and I'll publish them and other people will learn. They need to, they need to know that we're coming up with, to some type of increase or some type of big change.